Thank you, everyone. Sorry about that technical difficulties. Now I hear a little bit of echo, but if it's bothering someone, let me know. Thank you all for joining us tonight, either virtual and in person, and it's nice to be at PES. We will start off with a Centuate the Positives.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Chairwoman or Madam Chair Watson and the rest of the board. I'm Shauna Schleif, Principal at Phoenix Elementary, and welcome. It's great to have you all here. It's been an amazing week here at school because of Teacher Appreciation Week, and there's just something about gratitude that brings a lot of joy to people's lives. And so just want to share with you some examples of how the teachers are being recognized. We had door room service brought to each teacher, and they got to select what they wanted, and then treats were brought to their classrooms. We had a classified aide who went to each teacher's classroom all last week and said, "Hey, why don't you just go take a 20-minute break?" And then she worked with each individual student to create these books for each teacher. So they got a bound book today with all of these beautiful notes from all of their class, from their students. So that was wonderful. We just have some amazing, hardworking people in our district and across the nation, and these weeks really uplift and celebrate people for being amazing and doing what we do to help support kids. Additionally, yesterday, we had a celebration here at PES in honor of May the 4th. So we had "May the Fourth Be With You," did a whole Star Wars-themed dress-up day. It was, we had teachers teaching lessons using Star Wars. We had students giving announcements using Yoda. It's just been a fun week all around, so that was really fun. We also have our Spring Fling, which is a family engagement activity that we will be, that will happen next Thursday. So we'll have games, food, prizes, and then also educational activities here next Thursday from 5:00 to 7:00. So if anybody wants to come join in that, you are welcome to do that. And then finally, next week, we are sending our 5th graders off to outdoor school at Pacifica, and we're pretty excited that they get to have the opportunity to go in camp and, you know, bond before they head off to middle school. So that's what's going on on the pirate ship.
Good evening, Board. Madam Chair Watson, this is Kurt Schenk, Principal at Orchard Hill Elementary School. Same for us. It's been a great week at Orchard Hill, celebrating Teacher Appreciation Week. Our classified folks over there are pretty amazing. I didn't bring samples, but I think Michael saw this morning. The staff room looks phenomenal. He's shaking his head, yeah. Anyway, they're really getting treated special, and it's fun. It's a great feeling. It just adds a great sense of gratitude and celebration in the building, so it's wonderful to have. And I did want to, I was asked to pass on a thank you to the Board, your kind words for your gifts today. Your kind words were much appreciated by many of the staff, so thank you very much for that. Appreciate that. Thanks, Michael, for bringing them by. Other things happening at Orchard Hill. Kelly Reed and Rhonda Scoggins put together a penny drive to raise funds for the World Central Kitchen. They're an organization that was here in the valley, helping out our families, our communities during the fire. They did a lot of wonderful things for us, and so we are doing a penny drive, a little penny war, to raise funds for that organization who is now in the process, or now in the middle of helping out the Ukrainian refugees. And so we're raising funds to help that organization out. The drive will end on the 16th. There's some pretty good containers that are pretty heavy. I've been in some classrooms. It's like, ooh, that one's heavier. That one's heavier than Mr. Carson's, whatever. So anyway, been having a little fun with that. It will be interesting to see what we raise fund-wise. And lastly, I want to mention, last night, we held a Love of Reading night, and we also went with the theme of "May the Fourth Be With You," so it's a little Star War theme. It was, I want to thank the family engagement team at Orchard Hill. They're the ones who organized it, put it all together, got things set up and ready, and it was a huge hit. We had well over 120 families sign in, and most of those families were three to five, six kids or family members. So you calculate that out, that's a multi-hundred crowd that was in our building last night, having a great time and just loving being together as a community. It was really fun. I got a couple opportunities to sit and watch people, and just the interaction, the feeling of community was beautiful to watch and much appreciated. Great time, lots of smiles. So we do have another event coming up at the end of this month, the dance. And I'll hopefully can share some details with you later about that, because I didn't get that in my notes, but I know that's coming up. One more family get-together before the end of the year. So that's it from Orchard Hill. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Madam Chair Watson and Board. Heather Lowe from Talent Elementary. Also, Kurt and Shauna, just want to appreciate teachers for sure. It's been probably the hardest two years of teaching ever in the history of at least our generations. Just, they're working so hard to make our days really special for our kids. And so we've also had fun stuff today. We have a nacho bar, which I was really appreciative of, because I was really hungry, and we're celebrating Cinco de Mayo. So it's just been a fun week. And speaking of teacher appreciation, I want to, I'm sure you've been informed that Carrie Donham has retired early. She was going to leave at the end of last, at the end of this school year, but she had to leave a little bit early because of family emergency. But just want to publicly recognize Carrie. She taught at Talent Elementary for 22 years and a total of 34 years as a teacher. So she's, I know Erin can attest to this, and so can Kurt, like the quintessential teacher that you, every kid, wants to be in their classroom. I know Nancy's kids were in there, and she's just amazing. So we wish her well on her retirement. Also, last night, we did have a family fun night as well. I think Kurt and I were on the same wavelength this week and had a huge turnout. We had 161 families sign in, which was crazy. Brent got to stop by. Sarah came and volunteered. Sarah, she was in charge of the outdoor games, including Bubbles and Cornhole. It's an important role at an elementary school. So it was so fun, and it, you know, it kind of brought back memories of when we welcomed our kids back and just like a couple times just welled up a little bit like, wow, yes, we're back. We're back in business. So that was super fun. Also, this yesterday, yesterday was long. I had a coffee with the principal again and centered our conversations around wellness and really prepping for these new positions, the community care positions, and getting some cool feedback and just really empowering voices in the community and our families to like help in the decision-making process of how we serve and just really cool networking opportunities. And then last, we are in the middle of planning for summer school. Woo-hoo! So next week, we're going to have a hiring Palooza, me and Marie Lee. Oh, my gosh, we, it's just like 15-minute, 15-minute interview after interview after interview to get everybody hired and ready. So I'll keep you informed on that, and that's it from PES.
Good evening, Board of Directors. Aaron Santi, Principal at Phoenix Talent Rising Academy. We also, we're celebrating Teacher Appreciation Week. Our entire non-teaching staff, which is me and Danny Goodwin, were able to shower a little love on our three teachers, and they're all pet lovers, so they all received some pet-related gifts. They were very appreciative. And they're appreciative. They wanted to send their appreciation to the Board too, for the Board gifts as well. And then also, just briefly, wanted to share that our kindergarten through second-grade classes were out at Arts and Todd Woods today. So they got a little bit wet, but they had a great time. They had over half of all their families show up, and so for our field trips, the families are invited. They get to bring siblings. So there were actually more parents and siblings than there were students of ours. So they had about 40 people out there. So that was fun. They said they got a little wet, but they had a great time, and they will do it again. And then the last thing before I pass the mic is I want to, just in my assessment role, again, remind people that while we're doing all this celebration, we have Smarter Balance assessments happening, we have Dibbles assessments happening, we have Eye Ready, final diagnostics happening, we have local performance assessments happening and work samples happening. All of those are happening third through 11th grade right now. And so these people are working really hard while we're showering them with appreciation. So I just want to appreciate those teachers for working to continue to make that happen during this kind of crunch time at the end of the year. So thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair Watson and the Board. I'm Lisa Roman. I'm the Assistant Principal at Talent Middle School, and Mr. Valier is not able to appear tonight, but he sent along some shout-outs that he'd like me to read. First, I would like to congratulate Rich Hobbins. He was recently awarded an Outstanding Leadership Award by the OEA. He was one of only two local presidents statewide to have this honor. We appreciate his dedication and hard work for teachers, for kids, and for public education. Yay, Rich. I'm so glad I was able to read that one. Additionally, we'd like to thank and highlight the work of Jamar Boyd, Sandra Tringalo, Heather Armstrong, and Celia Rowan. They recently led the work to create the TMS schedule for 22-23. Super exciting. Their creativity, dedication, and collaboration is a testament to our entire TMS team, working well together, linking arms to create a great school for adolescents. And then lastly, we'd like to give a shout-out to Richard Berg. He's our media specialist, and this is his first year in this job. And he has done such an outstanding job taking on Smarter Balance Assessment Coordination, and it's really tough. It's a huge feat, and he's just done phenomenal. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Board. Toby Walker, Principal at Phoenix High School. A few, oh, good, you got me, Chris. A few things for the pirate ship. Teacher Appreciation Week, you heard it once already. Our goal, our goal was to get our teaching staff something every single day. And once again, thank you to the Board for what you guys did. I echo what Kurt said. A lot of our staff are really excited about the kind words in the card. Those small things go a long way. Speaking of that, lots of good food, lots of fattening food, nothing very healthy that week. But one thing that was really healthy for the soul happened on Wednesday. Our students wrote pretty much gratitude cards to our teachers, and watching the teachers go to the box and look in the box and read those, I think that's so rewarding. It's amazing how far words can go. You know, that sandwich goes pretty far. Angelo's goes pretty far, but those words really speak to the hearts of the teachers. So that was really meaningful. Another thing that's really meaningful is our Bilinguality Seal. You've heard me talk about it quite often. 26 students right now is what we're at. That is a new record. So yes, that's something to celebrate. These are students who demonstrate proficiency in reading, writing, speaking, in English and Spanish. They get an awesome award on their diploma, and really, it's just a great opportunity for them. So I want to thank Celine Fairmon and Tessa Wright. On top of that, Spanish credit. So college Spanish credit, we're able to get college Spanish credit for those tests those students are taking through SOU. So great partnership there and an awesome opportunity. Grad Night Auction, $20,000-plus. I was not able to make it. Thank you, Dave, for being in the house for the Pirates, but just watching baseball. My kid's baseball. A great, great opportunity, a great auction. Want to thank the Grad Night Committee. Richard Watson usually outbits me every single year, so I chose not to go just for my own self-confidence. But that $20,000 goes to the Family Fun Center and lots of cash prizes for the students that graduation night at the all-night party at that fun center. Baudictorians and Saludatorians, I feel like we're ahead of the ballgame on this one. We did elect them this week, and when I saw the list of students and we took a look at them, our committee went, wow, what an amazing group of kids to be recognized. We had six Baudictorians and one Saludatorian. Baudictorians this year, Joseph Hyatt, Elwood Hosking, Stone La Croix, Dylan Randall, Zion Shoelbane, Sophia Stubblefield, and our Saludatorian was Heidi Taylor. And just, I've made a lot of parent phone calls this year, the last two years. These were really fun parent phone calls to make, just to listen to the parents talk about what their kids have been through the last two years, on top of that, the last four and 12 in education. But really rewarding for them as parents. It's a recognition as a parent. We all have, most of us have kids, and to see what these kids have done and accomplished, it was a great reward for them. And last but not least, it is Mother's Day on Sunday, so happy Mother's Day to all you mothers. Hope you have a great day. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Watson, Board members, community. In Food Service, we're happy to be announcing that we're past our ODE state audit with zero findings. So that was huge. We did a lot of work, and we were really excited to have that. The 2021-2022 school year is actually ending pretty successfully for us, and there's some more details in your packets for you on some of that. This week, we were actually honored to celebrate Juanita's 25th anniversary with us here in Phoenix Talent Food Service. So we were really excited to have that day with her. Tomorrow is Lunch Food Hero Day, and I'm actually looking forward to celebrating that with all of my staff and all of the kids. We've got some goodies up our sleeves, but I know they're really just looking forward to hearing all of those kids' thank-yous. And last, I just want to remind everyone, when we start ending out the year, we start looking for the plans for upcoming. We've already got a lot of fun, new, big ideas for summer and for the next school year, but I'm going to leave us today with our summer plans. We will be open all summer long, right here at Phoenix Elementary, Monday through Friday, 7:45 to 8:15 for breakfast, all children in the community. Even if you're not from the community, but you're visiting the community, get free meals, 18 and under. And then we'll be open lunch noon to 12:30. So we're really looking forward to seeing the kids all summer long. Thank you.
Anyone else have a Centuate the Positive?
I'll keep it brief. I know we're a little behind schedule, but I wasn't able to attend the last meeting. And I just wanted to, I kind of did things backwards. So I have, my first kid is starting school at Orchard Hill in the fall in kindergarten. And so I had an opportunity to attend my first event as a parent for Kinder Launch. And so I just wanted to, I know all of the Kinder Launches were great, but I just wanted to commend the staff at Orchard Hill for a very welcoming environment and, you know, really understanding that that's a big deal for kiddos and parents and doing it really well. So thank you for that. I've also had a couple opportunities to visit this school in the last few days. One, I had an opportunity to do a tour with some folks and learn more about our two-way immersion program. And it's something I don't think we talk about enough with the community about how awesome this program is, where students start in kindergarten and basically their instruction is in English and Spanish all the way through some of their seminal years in elementary school. There was a student on the tour with us who is graduating this year, who was a part of that program, and she is a phenomenal young lady and is going to do amazing things. So kudos to those two teachers. I have their names here. Hang on one second. I don't want to, I don't want to get it wrong. So I met with Ms. Hawkins and Mr. Kairos, and just incredible, incredible teachers doing amazing things in that program. So thank you for that. And then I also had the opportunity to deliver gifts for teacher appreciation to Phoenix Elementary and to Orchard Hill. And as I was here a couple days ago, Carrie Brooks invited me to her classroom. She leads the RISE program here, and what a joy it was to spend some time with those adorable kiddos. And she's doing incredible things with that program. And just, you can tell that it's a warm, welcoming environment where everyone feels safe and ready to learn. There's a lot of learning happening too. So kudos to her and that program and the special department. So thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have a Centuate the Positive? Yeah, we usually, yeah, I will, no. Yeah, go ahead.
And I just wanted to say a positive comment about the facilities, particularly the track and the soccer slash football field, and my grandchildren have had the opportunity to play over there. They aren't, well, they're in some clubs, you know, in the valley soccer clubs, and it's just been wonderful to see how this school district has opened up that facility. For the time, I'm not sure what schedules are and so forth and that, but for the time being, to see other kids out there playing, so I really appreciate that.
We will move on to the Student Representative Report. Ruby?
Hello, everybody. So AP testing started this week at the high school, and it's always a super stressful time, no matter how much studying you put in, but everyone is doing great and getting through it, and it's really good to see. And then prom is next Saturday, but first, we have a huge spirit week going on. And in that spirit week, we have dress-up days, and then we have spirit point competitions where the different classes try and get as many points as they can to win a field day at the end of the year. And some of those competitions are pretty funny, like a spicy ramen eating competition and a pie-throwing competition at teachers. And so we're all looking forward to that. And then at the assembly, we're going to meet and celebrate our sparrow Ricky, who is a little boy from our community who we wrote, raised money for, doing community service throughout the whole year. And I was looking if he there at the end, if we would make our goal, but we were able to pull through and get all the money we could for him, plus an additional, I think, $900 for him. And so that's going to be super fun to see him and be able to celebrate him, and I think that's it for me.
Thank you very much. Next up is Citizens Comments. I have not gotten any from anyone here in present and none online and none through our forms. So just reminder, if you want to have a system comment, you can also fill out a form online under the Board tab on the website. Ruby, next to the Superintendent Report.
Thank you, Madam Chair Watson. I just want to commend all the comments on Teacher Appreciation Week. It was great to see the emails, the pictures, the amazing activities to celebrate our teachers. And our hope is that they feel appreciated all year long, and I really am thankful and grateful for, you know, Board's engagement in helping support and celebrate our teachers and taking part in those gift-givings and just being in our schools. Also, for those of you that, as we open up and have activities just to participate in that, it's amazing to see the families smile, cry sometimes with enjoyment of being on our campuses and participating in fun activities. So it's great to see. Want to give you an update on the UGB for Culver Road. Thank you, Sarah Crawford, for joining me last week at the Talent Public Meeting on the incorporation of Culver Road into the Talent UGB. I thought it was positive for our piece, which is TA1, which we're asking to be incorporated into the city limits. Most of the comments were from the right-of-way that will be connected from Culver Road to Foss Road and connect near the middle school, which is in the long-range regional plan. But it's now being discussed with some, looking, looking at how that will play out over the next several years. I want to commend Tiffany Lambert and her team for spearheading the student investment account activities, all the feedback facilitating the meetings, prioritizing the student investment funds. We finished up our last meeting last week, I believe, and really prioritized that out on what our community shared and what the desires are. So we'll look forward to sharing that air soon as well. And on a related note, Tiffany and Aaron Santi and Tammy Ingerson and myself went to an ODE meeting, which is sometimes stimulating, sometimes not so stimulating. But this one has some excitement, because there are numerous reports our staff have to complete each and every year, and this meeting yesterday was about consolidating all of that and reducing the redundancy that we report to the ODE. That I, we know they have the information already, but we still have to write it in a form in certain reporting categories. So that was exciting. Kind of, I guess. But I want to just talk about the budgeting process to Yasmin Carabinus and her team. I think we say it every year, as mandates and grants and extra funding, federal funding, comes down to the local level, it gets, it gets more and more challenging to really put the pieces in the right spots. Yasmin has been working tremendously hard, working with our staff, working with a number of people as far as the grants that we receive federally and from the state to put together a budget that I really believe will help serve us well. There was a legislation recently that backfilled some debt service potential losses and some other funding losses, which is in addition to our ADM security. And so what we'll need to do as we end this year is do some resolutions for the Board to accept that money. So we'll be looking at putting those together and hopefully be prepared to present those resolutions next week or next meeting. Good problem to have helps us sustain for years to come, especially if we're putting that away for future ADM losses. Finally, we had a Save Schools meeting this morning, and just to remind you, the Board and the audience, what that is, in 2006, we went to a conference to really, you know, learn about how we can collaborate with our elected officials, with our law enforcement, with juvenile justice, with our drug and alcohol providers that will serve the needs of our kids to, for treatment. And we've been doing this for now 15 years almost, meeting every quarter. Rick Nagel's been a longtime founding member of this get-together. He was there this morning, and it's great to share what's going on in our schools and some of the challenges we all have out in the community. One of the greatest things I heard this morning was, John and I have been discussing, I don't know if you know, if you head south on 4th and there's a four-way stop sign, that sometimes people don't see the stop sign, even though we put flashers in there as well. And so we wrote to the city last week, really, it was recently, to have some, maybe just some strips or something to make drivers aware. And last night, they ordered strips to be able to put those in, and they're going to do it each, at all directions of that four-way stop, which will be much safer for our kids and communities. So really excited about that. Thanks to the City of Phoenix, SRO Hole at the high school, and Terry Baker weighed in and basically said wanted it done as soon as possible. So really appreciate that. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Brent? Moving on to the Program Report. I'm so excited. We're doing Program Reports again. They're so fun, and we learn so much.
All right. Thank you so much for having us. So we're from Rogue Valley Farm to School, and we're here to share a little bit about our Digging Deeper School Partnership Program. So my name's Rebecca Slossberg. And I am recently the co-executive director. We're doing a little bit of a transition, and we're splitting our executive director position. So I'm in charge of all of our programs that we do, including this Digging Deeper School Partnership Program.
Hi, everyone. I'm Abigail Blynn. I'm the procurement coordinator for Rogue Valley Farm to School. Me and I help nutrition directors support the local farms by sourcing for our school.
Hi, everyone. My name is Megan Murphy. My job title is a little bit simpler. I am a garden educator at Talent Elementary School.
All right. So just a little bit of an overview of what the big and deeper school partnership program is. So right now we are currently working with two school districts, Phoenix Talent and Central Point. So we work at all the elementary schools in both of those districts. So we have eight schools that we're working with right now. Part of what we do is taking students on farm field trips. We call this our harvest meal program. So students come out to the farm, they get a chance to get to meet the sheep here. This is at Hanley Farm. It's one of our activities. And we also go to the farm at SOU. So students arrive, they split into groups. They get a chance to go out in the field, they harvest their food. They go into our kitchen, outdoor kitchen station where they learn knife skills and other cooking skills. They cook their meal. And then they all sit down together as a class outside of the farm to enjoy that meal. And then they do one other activity in there, which in the case of Hanley is getting to meet and greet with the sheep, which is the highlight. Another part of our program is the tasting tables. Abigail is going to tell you a little more about that.
Yeah. So the tasting tables is an opportunity for kids to taste items that we bring in each month. We hardly feature a fruit or vegetable that's seasonally available. And the students have like a nice environment to try a new item that might be new to them or just a new form of the item that they're trying. So this is one of our nursing student interns at Talon Elementary. And that's our lovely display of radishes. And then with these tasting tables, the, our chef on staff is able to work with Phoenix High School and their culinary program to help prepare the items for the tasting table. I think they're making their pickling beets in that one. Oh, yeah.
All right. Another aspect is providing professional development for our partner teachers. So we work with one or two grade levels at each of our partner schools. And so part of that is my job, which is one of the parts I really love is I get to go in and meet with those partner teachers and offer some professional development about how to integrate what they're doing in the classroom with their curriculum that we're doing out in the garden. So kind of that, what can they do? What can they bring back to the classroom that we're doing in the garden? And what are their standards they're working on at that moment? In their classroom that we can bring into the garden. So we do a lot of standards based lessons. We have math lessons and language lessons that we do out in the garden that match up with what those standards are that they're doing in the classroom. All right. Abigail is going to tell you about our compost program.
So this year, starting in October, or last year, starting in October, we were able to launch our composting program with Talon and Phoenix Elementary. This is where students are able to compost their, their uneaten food to either go to making soil or to feed farms pig. So that's been really fun for the kids. And from October till now, we've collected 34 gallons buckets, if you've seen them of food waste. So it's really exciting and hoping to continue that program.
Oh, we're going to try to show a little clip here. Let's see if this will work. I'm going to fast forward it just a little bit. Sorry, Megan, I'm skipping you. And I'm happy to hear this. If you want to see the whole film, it's only about five minutes, but just want to show you a little portion of it. Doesn't look like we're getting sound.
And we do.
There's more, but. All right. So the other part of the compost film did show Phoenix. We're doing it at both Phoenix and Talon Elementary Schools. So starting last summer, we were also able to partner with summer school, which was a great way to continue our school year partnership into the summer. So we worked with third, fourth, and fifth grade students at all three elementary schools. So they got to come out to the garden. They worked with their garden educators that had been there with them through the school year. Megan and Alicia is our educator at Phoenix and Orchard Hill. And then one of the days of the week, they got to go out to the farm at SOU and have a field trip out on the farm. So it was a great partnership and we're hoping to continue it this summer.
Another aspect of what I do is to help school districts all throughout Jackson and Josephine County use their ODE farm to school grant funds. So we work with Amy and Jeff to supply a list of available items each week that they can look at and order from vegetables, meats, grains, and yeah. Example of the availability list of some of our local farms here in Jackson and Josephine County. Yeah, last week or this week. And we also help just like supporting with applying to these grants, the competitive and non-competitive grant funds through ODE. And we serve as the regional procurement hub and education hub for the statewide farm to school network.
So I have the really fun job of doing weekly garden classes with our partner schools. And so I am at Talon Elementary School and I work with third grade and a third through fifth outdoor discovery program. At Phoenix Elementary, Alicia works with third and fourth grade. And at Orchard Hill, she's working with fifth grade this year. So all of those classes, they get to come out to the garden for about an hour every single week. And they learn cooking skills, they learn nutrition, they learn gardening skills. And then we also put a big emphasis on social emotional learning, especially after last year. So this allows us for us to establish some really good connections with these kids and really get to know them and to see another caring adults in their life who they can come to. And it's a lot of fun for us and the kids. So last year was our first year in this district and it was definitely a very challenging year. So we started off the year doing distance learning. We thought of a lot of different ways that we could connect with the kids. We thought maybe doing videos and sending them out every week, but then we just decided to do synchronous learning. So every week, twice a week, we logged on to their Google classroom and we did all sorts of lessons with the kids. And it was a great way to build those connections with those kiddos until we could come back in person with them. Yeah. So I think we all remember the Alameda fire that happened. That was just as we were getting going with our online lessons before we really connected with those kids. So as, as an organization, we decided to shift our focus and kind of find where we felt we needed to be. So we took a step back from the education side and we volunteered out in the community for a couple of weeks. And then we came back to our teachers and but what do you need? What do your kids need? How can we support you? How can we give you guys what you need at this moment? So we kind of shifted our focus and we started working. Alicia, she started working out in White City at that temporary learning site where there were a lot of displaced kids. And we were supporting teachers and students. We really did take that emphasis on the social emotional learning. And we started a food box program, which some of you might have heard about, and we're going to talk about that real soon. We also shifted some of our normal seasonal themes. So normally we do things like plant parts and seed saving. And we still incorporated that, but we also wanted to focus a lot on connection and community and inclusion and justice. And kind of incorporate some different themes that actually stuck through this year as well. So the farmers, the family food box program, this started right after COVID in 2020. We had a grant from the USVA to provide 2,000 boxes of locally grown organic produce. And this was a way of supporting both our local farmers, but also families in the valley. And so we showed up at each school one day every week with a huge palette of just free veggie boxes to go out to families in need. And it became a huge hit that our boxes started going really quickly. So once that grant ended in August, we were looking for ways to bring it back, especially for fire victim families who were still struggling afterwards. So we brought that program back just to the Phoenix Talent School District. We did 200 boxes of food in 18 weeks. So we were out here from January until June. So in the freezing cold up until the hot summer, handing out boxes of food to families who needed them. Inside of those boxes, we had a food for thought, which was an activity guide that had recipes. It had a little shout, shout outs to some of our local farms. They had activity sheets for kids. And it was bilingual. So it was in English and Spanish.
So after the fire, we also got together as an organization and thought about how we're going to bring these themes into our garden curriculum. And a lot of these themes were already there, but we really wanted to, as Megan said, kind of accentuate those and really focus on the community resilience, some of those pieces. And so in the course of, I think, a week and a half, we created a whole new curriculum that worked for distance learning. And we partnered with Betty Leduke, local artist, and she was really gracious and generous with her artwork. And so we used her sketches to create a coloring book that went out to all of our students that were in the partnership program. So we used those sketches and there's, the sketches were all of local farm workers in the Rogue Valley. And so the focus was on community and pride and also supporting and uplifting those regional farm workers. And the sketches were of real people that live here in the Rogue Valley. So this is just an example of one of the lessons. And so it would have all the coloring book pages have one of the sketches and then on the other page is a prompt and the lesson plan would go with that prompt. So this was one around giving thanks and around gratitude. So the students were asked to trace their hand and the theme of the coloring book was the hands that feed us. And kind of this idea of all the hands and all the people that enable food to be on our table. And so kind of giving gratitude for all those hands. So they traced their hands and wrote some words of gratitude for the farm workers in our valley. And this was one of those lessons. All right. So last year, we also underwent a pretty extensive evaluation training. So two, two of us on staff and one of our board members were part of a six month cohort of people from across the nation that were doing this project impact was the name of the training to learn about how to do impact focused evaluation. And so it was a pretty extensive process. We created surveys and we also created interviews for our, our teachers. So all the teachers, nutrition directors, so some of you in this room got to do this, this interview with us. And it was a lot of work, but it was also a really amazing experience to get to have the, the time to sit down and spend an hour or so with all the teachers that we work with, superintendents, nutrition directors, principals, and hear from them what the impact on them was. So the focus is really on how does this program impact you? And so a lot of things came of that. We ended up with 12 different findings. This one is the garden is healing and that came up a lot that the garden being in the garden was a really healing, healing space. And I'll just read you one of the quotes. These are all quotes from teachers, but I find myself trusting that they can rise to the challenge and then meet it head on. It's okay if they aren't successful. At least they are on track and they tried it. I see a lot more of that, which is a real value to the school. Kids are just a lot more resilient and capable than I sometimes give them credit for. So it was really rewarding to see the impact and the things that we were hoping were coming out of this program did seem to be coming through. And one of the unexpected things that came out of it was that the teachers also had a lot of these positive feelings that the students had had. It was a really healing place for the students, but it was also a really healing place for the teachers to be out in the garden with their students. It was giving them a different role with their students, a different relationship with their students. And also to have another adult there to be supportive and just the kind of healing things that we hope for that happened in a garden. Getting your hands in the dirt, all those things that the students were getting that was really down regulating and really healing for the students was also there for the teachers as well. So that was kind of an added bonus that we hadn't even really considered that aspect of the program. So we hope to keep that in mind and continue that, that support as we go forward. Okay. I don't know how we did on time, but we got through it. And we would be happy to answer questions and share more information after this. So those are our contacts up there. You can find us at Rogue Valley Farm to School.
Hi, I just have a quick question. I know, and first of all, thank you so much for really a comprehensive program overview. My quick question is, are you partners with any of the YMCA or Boys and Girls Club programs that are part of our after school service for some of our students in the district?
No, we're not directly. And we have worked with both the YMCA and Boys and Girls Club over the years. I used to do an after school garden club. Ruby was one of my students way back when. And we partnered a lot with the Boys and Girls Club at that point, like we'd send them back to Boys and Girls Club. And we've done things with the YMCA over the years with tasting tables and things, but we don't really have a direct partnership with either of those organizations at the moment.
Or with their food service.
Are you looking to expand your program to have that be part? Are you trying to get more into this actual school day as part of supporting the education process? I can't remember the word that starts with an S that.
Yeah, right now what we're doing is during the, is during the school day. I don't think we have any plans to expand for like more of that after school niche. We have done that in years past. And we really are trying to focus more on integrating into the school day and then into summer school as well. I think where our expansion is heading is probably to try to reach more schools and students as we continue this program or to expand in different ways in that way, but probably not adding after school programming.
Sorry, I was telling, warning him to turn me down. So it's not too loud. That was a wonderful presentation. Thank you for sharing. I have a very board member question for you, and that is how are you funded?
That's an excellent question and always on our minds. Yeah, a few different ways. So we are mostly grant funded. We get some state support through ODE. They have a procurement grant that Abigail mentioned. They also have an education grant, so we get funding through that. We have a lot of other foundations that we get grants from. We get some private donations, but it's always a fun challenge. It's ongoing.
Seems like the food service is able to use some of their funds to purchase direct from the farmers. Seems like the food service is able to use some of their funds to purchase direct from the farmers, right? So that's good. Do you, what is your role in that? Do you have like a pass through or anything like that or just funded separately and then just making the connection?
They typically use the OD farmer's school funds that's given to the school district to purchase those local foods. But they can use their own, their own dollars for that. I'm not sure if I understand your question fully.
That was, yeah, I was just curious if you, like, do you charge a percentage when you make that connection? Or you're just helping make the connection between food service and local farmers?
Yeah, so they have, they are able to spend 25% of their funds. For technical assistance and for delivery and stuff like that. So if a school can meet that 25% or a portion of that, we'll ask for, but we never require it.
Thank you, appreciate it.
And just to clarify that, we mentioned that we're the regional hub. So part of our, our role as regional hub leads is to help provide that, that technical assistance to schools. For, and it would also, we have, you mentioned a procurement gathering, so that's a chance where we get producers together and school staff together to kind of help that matchmaking of like what's being grown and what are schools looking for? So they're can try and increase more local purchasing of, from farms in our area.
I might just add to Rebecca's been amazing support. If you walk out here and see the amazing garden, the Orchard Hill Garden, they've been committed to that. We've always had the talent elementary garden space, but we've really enriched our garden space at all around our schools. So thank you for maintaining and your vision for the garden space and being in there, so appreciate that.
Yeah, so not only does Megan like out there in the garden teaching kids, but she's also the one that's maintaining all the garden beds. So at talent, it's a little different because we're part of that community garden. But yeah, for Alicia at Orchard Hill and at Phoenix, she's the one keeping those gardens looking good.
We have a board member online too that has a question. So Polly, do you want to ask your question?
Yeah, can you hear me? Okay, um, I am so grateful for this program. I'm excited about what it offers to us as a community and as a family really is what we are here. I'm wondering about how we can better support you as board members in what you're trying to do.
That's a great question. I have to think on that, yeah, I think just continuing to offer the support of letting us do this program. And I think, yeah, helping, you know, in the future, it'd be great to brainstorm other ways. As you know, Sarah asked a question about where we were thinking about expanding, but you know, we're, we're here to serve you. That's what the partnership is all about. So if there's ways, if the board is seeing ways that you, you know, that we could integrate our programs more into the schools. We really want to be, you know, integrated in the schools and be part of the schools and be building those relationships in the schools that we partner with. So when you see other opportunities for that, that fits with our mission, I think that's a great way to, to work with the board and to support us.
Great, thanks so much. So it's, it's your magic wand time, what would, if you waved your magic wand, what would you ask for?
Oh, wow. Secure funding would be nice, yes, lots of money. You know, I've mentioned those interviews we did. I don't know Heather and Shawna, we had these great conversations of, I think one of the questions was like, what's your vision, what's your dream? And you know, there was these, for me, like dreams of like, oh, the kids are out in the garden and then they're, they're picking that and they're bringing it into the cafeteria. And they're learning how to cook in the cafeteria and they're serving that food to their students. We're not there yet, but you know, those kinds of visions. I've had a long term vision and dream of having a farm at school. It's happened in other districts. I've bugged Brentbury about it a little bit. Bethel School District has a farm as part of their school district land. And that would be amazing somewhere down the road. So there's, yeah, a lot of dreams of where to take it. There's so much opportunity and amazing things that can happen. Yeah, Megan.
We have, we're we're so lucky to have beautiful garden spaces, a lot of schools don't have it. And a lot of times I go out there and I find that only my partner classes are the ones using this beautiful outdoor space. So if you can encourage other teachers to not be afraid to take their kids outside to use the garden as a classroom, that would be amazing. I think there's a lot of fear behind doing that because kids get really wild when they go outside. But the more you take them outside, the less wild they become when they're in the garden. So just that encouragement to get teachers to use the outdoor garden space because it is there for everybody.
An outdoor teaching space for Phoenix School or Phoenix Elementary. And talent have an outdoor teaching space, but Phoenix Elementary does not.
Yeah, you probably shouldn't have started us down this road of what all we wish for if we had a magic wand. I'm also a parent, I have a student at TMS and TES. And so, you know, I dream of, you know, my kids going to school and eating farm fresh food for lunch and then going out to the garden, all those things that we're working to make happen. I think, you know, that piece of, of equity that every student gets an amazing lunch when they come to school. That reflects what the community values are and they get to go in the garden and learn some of those skills of gardening, how to grow their own food, how to cook food from scratch. Is really setting them up as, you know, productive citizens down the road. So those are all the things that, you know, we're hoping happen.
Thank you, is there any other questions? Thank you so much, that was great, yes. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. We have the approval of the agenda, approval of the minutes and the personnel report. As you can tell, this time I kind of changed it up a little bit. And did some information discussion before we did recess because I felt like the board member discussion about school site connections would be better if admin was here. And the student representative discussion would be better if the student reps were here. And I would also suggest moving facilities and bond because John also has to stay with us many times when the rest of admin does not. So that is what I'm suggesting in having a recess after that. So do I hear a motion for the consent agenda?
Move approval of the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Thank you, Michael, thank you, Sarah. Any discussion, hearing none, we will approve the consent agenda. There is no action items tonight, so we are moving on to information and discussion, which would be the board member school site connections. I put this on the agenda based on a discussion we had during Brent Superintendent Evaluation. And then I think Sarah suggested it as well, and some other board members have wanted to have this discussion. Many times we're out in the public or with representatives and we're asked like what challenges our district is having and what we're seeing. And sometimes it's hard to say those without knowing what is going on. Especially for Sarah and I in legislative policy when we're trying to change policies for the state. So I think we just want to brainstorm on how we can get information in the 30,000 feet level to bring to the LPC and OSBA and all of that. So anyone want to start off with any ideas or suggestions or what they had in mind for this conversation?
So are you, are you waiting for? Oh. Got it. Sure, well, I'll just comment while you're passing the mic there. I think, I think COVID and going into this next phase of reality, which is more back to normal, hopefully. Is going to impact this a lot because personally, I'm a board member who likes, if there's a training, I like to go to that training. I like to visit every school and do tours and pop into classrooms with the principal and just soak in the, the magic that happens every day. And we haven't really been able to do that in the last couple of years. And so for me, this is just something I hope will happen naturally now that things are improving from COVID perspective. So, yeah, I don't really have anything more to add other than just, I think that's going to open doors for, and I know administrators, well, just don't pop in unannounced. But I know they welcome us, you know, scheduling that time and, and I know that the staff is hungry for it too. They love to show off the amazing work that they do. So I would encourage everybody to explore that.
I might offer just one thought. We, this spring, we started to do district office field trips because we feel like the district office should not be left out of the spring field trip. So we've been having our DO staff, some that have never been to certain schools, especially if they're new. Do field trips to each of the schools and our goal is to get every district office staff member to every school before the end of the year. And when we do those, I can reach out to the school board if you can join us on those. They typically take about an hour. It is announced to the principal, so they know we're coming. But it is just a great way, and I know Denise participated one in Orchard Hill. And we went to Town Elementary and so it's just a great way to get our district office staff to see kind of their fruits of their labor. And, and one comment by a, somebody that purchases, orders items said, oh, I think I remember ordering that kindergarten rug. You know, for summer school, so. But yeah, so it's good, so I can definitely offer that to the board as we go throughout this spring.
Just, I, I think if, to serve that interest, what we used to do 12, 14 years ago. Board members would rotate and come in to the schools, meet with the principal, walk through, and then just talk about the specific things that are going on. Because when you guys come to events, you come to Love a Reading Night or you come to the Homecoming Game or whatever, like, that's cool, you're part of that event. But to serve your need, talking about what's going on in the schools that we can help drive at the state level. That's through conversations with the administrators and then the teachers, what's going on, tell us about. And you can have some pre scripted questions, which they used to do, like what programs are you proud of in your school right now? What are the biggest challenges you're facing? What do parents want to see more of? Just simple things like that, those drive those conversations and you guys will get that 30,000 feet information, everything you want, I think, just from an hour. So it could be done really quickly at each building.
I would add, you're always invited to coffee with the principal. That's a great conversation starter and kind of getting that structure in place to just have casual conversations. Because this is very structured and formal, so to be able to have that opportunity to have voice and conversation.
Will you invite us to those? I just want to also add a little bit that like we in education have always been into kind of a deficit model, trying to like skim and scrape and get by. And so recently, we've just been in this position of adding so much that like our hearts are pretty grateful. It feels like, oh, what more do we need? Well, we've gotten instructional coaches and we've gotten a lot of new additional staffing with our SIA funds. And we've gotten all this, all this flood of support. So when you asked that question, I was like, oh gosh, okay, what more can we ask for? It feels somewhat like, but I'll be thinking about it, so thank you for that reminder.
Yes, Dawn. I also wanted to add that if you ever want to tour the facilities and see the background stuff that happens, our operations and the concerns that are made from some of the decisions at the state level that really affect the overall operation. We would love to do tours of any of the locations that you want to see.
Anyone else want to add out in the, any other admins or staff?
I appreciate that, thank you. And just as we, I guess, come into planning as part of, part of the question was from this new regional role for Legislative Policy Committee. As bills and policies come forward, really impacting how you guys do your jobs. And how we can advocate best for you at the state level based on those things that are coming down. So I guess I'd just really like to make sure that we're having those conversations up so that we can not just represent our region well. But a little bit selfishly represent our district also because of our size, right? We're really looking at feeling like maybe we're a little bit more of a rural type of school. And then obviously with the impact with the fire and, and just the challenges. And also to highlight our district and what's going on well. So I guess I'll speak for Dawn in this, we really want to serve you guys to the best of our ability. So having, making sure that we can share if, especially whatever challenges we're over, we're trying to overcome. Yes, we want to hear the good stuff, but also really want to hear how we can advocate and support the things that are coming down the pike and really, you guys are boots on the ground, like you, you know. And I, I want to make sure that I stay in, in my understanding of my role and not that, it's not my golden micromanage by any stretch. But I really want to advocate for this district and for our region for the best for our students and families. So knowledge is power.
I was going to add, Sarah and Board of Directors, that, you know, as we bring on this new director role with the community care organization. We've really been talking about like having an interagency kind of community care focused group that like we do with safety. And really inviting you guys to participate in that and hear how our partners are working with our families and thinking about that. Because so much of what you do is advocating for families essentially. So you should definitely, but we'll make sure we invite you to those.
I just want to add, well, that was loud, I apologize. Something I really appreciate about our board, this year has been pretty contentious with some school boards across the state and the country. And our board really does keep in mind that as administrators and teachers, we have licenses that we need to uphold and follow state regulations and such. And we appreciate, or I do, that you keep that in mind and aren't making decisions that put our licenses at risk as professionals. So thank you for, for checking in with us on things too.
Thank you, I think you answered most of our questions. Some of the things that have come up throughout the years is like Erin mentioned, adopting schools. And that's something the board can talk about again. And I just think we'll probably brainstorm, I mean, I was thinking having lunch with the teachers and lunch with the, the students. Back before COVID, as I, many of you welcomed me into your schools and at first everyone looked at me like I was like in there and was, you know, a spy or something. But once, once word got out, I got invited to a lot of schools. So I hope that we can let all the staff know that we really want to know what their challenges are. I know when I was helping do contract with admin and so, I would ask like what policies, what procedures are, are causing you problems? And I know last year there were some that came up that were really old policies. And part of the reason we're doing policy updates is because we have really old policies. But there might be procedures and other things. Also, there's some laws I've, people have talked to me about, like the attendance policy that the state has maybe isn't as good as what it needs to be. So those are the kinds of things I'm personally looking at, like what things were you like, this is totally outdated. The attendance policy was great before COVID, now it is not great. I know there's some other things with that that we can bring up and start advocating to change and help get the stories told of why it needs to be changed. So that's personally what I'm looking for. Just because I know attendance and I know there's some mental health, maybe policies and funding, drug addiction policies and funding. So those are the kinds of things I'm looking for. However, going in the classrooms, you usually find a lot of information. Anybody else want to add any discussion? Okay. Thank you so much for giving me, us your input, we really appreciate it. And I am speaking for myself, but probably for others that be prepared for emails and visitations. Because we want to come and enjoy the schools. Okay, moving on to Okay, moving on to student representative discussion. So we have put this up on the agenda because during our work session, we talked a little bit about student representatives and changing some things. This reminded me, I was just talking to someone at OSBA and they, they have a whole book they just developed on their student representative. And I asked them to send it to me and I haven't checked with them. I haven't got it. So we just wanted to check in and see what, what, how to improve this and how to make it better. And if we want to change how we just kind of check in, because it's been a little while. So I don't know if anyone wants to talk. And we might have questions for Ruby. I hate to put you on the spot, but yeah, how would we like to start off on that?
I would just like to hear from Ruby about her experience and what she thought went well and anything that we could do better to serve student reps in the future.
I think it, I mean, it was a great experience. I love being able to hear like what goes on behind the scenes. Because before, I was like, oh, there's a board somewhere. I know. But what, it's, yeah, but I, I have loved hearing like how the regulations change and what the other schools are doing. And I, I mean, I think it's great being able to come to the board meetings.
What did you, how did you feel about the selection process and just that whole, like the interview process? And do you have any feedback on that?
I thought it was okay. I mean, going into the room, I don't know exactly what I was expecting. So maybe telling the students a little more about what they should be expecting would be better. But yeah, and then I would say more diversity with the student boards. Because I know lots of people didn't know, the word didn't get out to a ton of people that there were going to be student board reps. So I'd say getting the word out more.
How would you get the word out more? Like, do you have suggestions on how to do that?
Yeah, I would say talking to the leadership class, I'm in it. But we have a huge, I mean, we do all sorts of stuff, but we have like an Instagram page where we post basically everything to get the word out. And then we do announcements in the morning, like Mr. Walker does them and Mr. Hart does them sometimes too. But those would be a good way to do it. And then, yeah, I would say talking to the leadership class would be the best way to do it.
What if we made a TikTok? Would that be helpful?
Oh, yeah, definitely a TikTok. Yeah, make a board TikTok.
You're in charge, Michael, on that one.
Second on that, that Michael's in charge. So I think the board talked about last year, really looking at offering the board student representative role to 10th, 11th, and 12th graders, just to help freshmen kind of get settled into high school and, and kind of get established with the routine a little bit. And I just wanted to hear maybe your thoughts on, on that, what you thought about that. And then also, one of the things that came up is something that another school district does is choosing the student representatives in the spring. Because then there's a little bit potential for over the summer when there's not school responsibilities, potentially to connect and how maybe understand, in addition to Denise's great training, but how to understand the board packet or roles and responsibilities or answer questions. And there's just a little bit, maybe without the pressures of school, having maybe that opportunity to have that. And then we have a pretty overview meeting in July that really sets the tone and really helps see the calendar of what we're going to do for the school year, kind of from a big picture view that might be helpful as well versus coming in and kind of, you know, the first couple of weeks of school are really crazy. You guys are all kind of figuring that out and then trying to kind of add the recruitment on, on top of that. So maybe looking ahead. So those are our reasons behind. So I'd really be interested to hear what you had to say about potentially doing that. And then also about just 10th, 11th, and 12th graders.
I think that having 10th, 11th, and 12th is the best way to do it. I think that freshmen use their freshman year just to realize what they're doing and how to navigate high school and having that experience when talking to the board, I think, helps a lot. And then have selecting the student representatives in the spring, I think is a good idea with that adjustment period in the summer and then that meeting. But I think that looking at the high school calendar is important, because in the spring, a lot is happening, especially with AP testing, SATs, seniors are, there's a whole bunch of stuff going on for seniors, even though you wouldn't be looking at that. It's just chaotic kind of at the high school sometimes. But yeah, I think we also do our ASB in the spring usually, which we're starting again, I think, this year, which is like the president, vice president and all that. So I think matching with the calendar would be the best way to do it. So maybe pre-spring, early spring.
When are those ASB elections? Because it seems like that would be something that would tie in as far as getting the word out as an opportunity to have a leadership role that might be different than what you were expecting.
Yeah, the ASB elections, I'm not sure exactly when those are, but so yeah, I think, yeah, leadership, we already put the word out for ASB, but I mean, I can tell everybody that.
One more question. What did you think about the application form? Because we had a little bit of board discussion prior to that, and I think even after. So we'd maybe be looking for some insight and from a student representative perspective on what the application looked like and the interview process. I mean, we like the magic wand question and the one minute, but you know, how did you feel about it? And then is there maybe something we should add? I guess having an application here would have been helpful to like say, I don't remember what's on it. I just remember that we had discussions about, is this really important to have on there? So what did you think of the interview question?
I, I thought it was a great question. And I thought it gives lots of insight to what the values are in a person and what their goals are for the school. For the application, I would say having what you previously done or been, I don't, can't remember if that was on there or not. But I think that's a always a good question to ask on application. And then I don't know about, I think the magic wand question was a good one for the interview.
Mr. Walker, do you want to add it? Oh.
Yes. Thinking about like sometimes, you know, putting myself back in high school, not really understanding what a board is. But after the school board meeting that's at Phoenix High School might be a good time to recruit board members because they've been, they've been able to participate in a board meeting and so they have a little bit of a more of an understanding of it. So thinking about tying those two events together so that that could be a recruiting strategy.
There we go. Hi, Ruby. I'm over here by the, sorry. A great, great feedback from a student perspective. And I think the process, it's hard to recruit, I'll be honest. We do visit classes. We do send it home to parents. Usually, parents get their kids on it. I think for me, if I was a student, I might feel a little bit awkward at the interview and selection process, unless I was a successful candidate. It is a little bit of humility to sit there and you got it, you made it, you made it. So I don't know if the board wants to consider they present and then you guys can discuss and then make a decision at that next meeting, or if you want to make a public decision, I know that's part of the process too. The magic wand question, I remember Craig brought that up when we, when funding was probably pretty dismal. Our facilities were terrible. And usually that drove a lot of that question. And those comments came from, we want this program, or we want a new school, or we want a new track, or we want a new field. So a lot of those conversations back then were driven by that. So I think sometimes that solicited that response. And now take a look around, it's a pretty awesome place to be. So I think there's some value in that question. But I guess to ask the board, what, what are you hoping to find out about the kids? Maybe what they're passionate about in education, more personal, personal question that way. That might help solicit some more, some more answers from kids. And I think like Ruby said, springtime is busy. So what the commitment level looks like for kids, we have a couple not here tonight. So, and they want to be here, but it gets pretty challenging.
I would say asking students what they're passionate about is a really good question to ask. Especially breaking the ice. It was scary going into the board meeting.
How could we like make it less scarier, I guess, would be the question.
I feel like it was important for us to be able to sit there and act professional and be able to present to all of you, because that's what we have to do at every meeting. So I think that was important. But maybe I, I think if board members could come to the school and just say, oh, I'm, I'm a board member. This is what I do. I think that would be a really good way to do it. Like what they were saying before.
Would, this kind of goes back to our previous discussion. If a board member came to the school like at lunchtime every quarter or something, do you think that it, how could we do that? Do you think would be productive if a board member came and we had lunch with the kids every so often? Or is there any other ideas that you think that could be productive to kind of open that, to make them feel more comfortable and for us to learn more?
I think at high school, it's really hard if you come at lunch, because everybody leaves, basically. But I think a good way would be on PH TV, which is our like TV that gets played in advisory every week. And everybody sees it. So I think that'd be a really good way to do that.
That's a great idea.
That's where we can air our TikTok.
Yeah, that's just, yeah, that's where you can do the TikTok.
Oh, goodness, Michael. Any other discussion we want to add to this conversation? Thank you, guys. This has been great and it's really helped us, really it has.
I just want to commend you, Ruby, on a job well done as a student rep and also your student colleagues as well. I know they couldn't be here tonight. And we all know that they have very important things to do. And I'm sure you're making a sacrifice to be here tonight as well. So thank you for, thank you for being here and for doing a great job representing students in Phoenix Town.
Thank you.
Polly, did you have any questions? You can say thumbs up and thumbs down if you don't want to turn your mic on.
I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Sometimes I forget about the person online. I'm trying hard not to do that. Okay, we'll move on to facilities and bond update. John?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board. It's great to be in front of you today. Really, all I want to talk about today is Town Elementary Playground that I mentioned last time. I believe we're going to have it as an action item next meeting, because we want to use ESAR funds to fund it. So it needs to be approved by the board. I believe in your blue package, there was a copy of the design. And I'm here to answer questions. If you have this sheet in front of you, just to help orient you on the, on the playground, this section here is actually the asphalt playground. And the swings, the swings are clear back here. So we will be changing the footprint of the playground. The, the old swings would go away. We're more than, we're doubling the amount of swings on the playground as well as replacing, you can see all of the new items that we would be putting in and replacing the oldest piece. The larger one that's newer would actually stay. In addition to that, we're planning on putting some curbs around the area so that we can contain the wood chips, the engineered wood fiber better and, and make that playground safer. Because right now, there's quite a few thinner spots. Because there's so much, so much area that doesn't even have playground equipment on it, that it's quite a bit thinner. We would also be looking at incorporating some concrete seating and stuff similar to what Orchard Hill had with its original playground, where it had some concrete benches and, and places to get in. The estimated cost, well, the equipment alone is $100,000. The installation is $40,000 and the site work would take the total to, and it's a rough estimate because we're still working on design as far as the benches, but approximately $250,000. But it would set us up maintenance wise, way easier to maintain than what we have. And some of the equipment that we actually have there is, has been deemed unsafe and needs to be removed. One other question you guys had to ask was accessibility. So this playground would have full accessibility. Several of the new structures are designed with accessibility in mind. And as far as the getting into the engineered wood chips, we would actually extend the asphalt down in a ramp. So it would ramp down and then the wood chips would go over it. So you just roll down and onto the wood chips, which they are an approved, they're, they're engineered and they're actually structurally sanded. So they're actually, a wheelchair can go across there. They're one of the approved surfaces. So any question?
What's the pink on this?
Mine's black and white.
I know. What's, what's this?
There is, there's some existing structure there, but we're adding to it. We're adding some mobility, like hop to like lower stools where the kids hop to it. And there's some other things, kind of like a little obstacle course. Her name, Heidi Roberts, the gym teacher here, she actually got a grant and we added some up here. It's one of the most popular pieces on this playground. And Heather had, we met with staff, we met with the playground assistants that did that. And then Heather met with parents and we got feedback. And Heather gave us a list when we met with the designer, these are the things that I would like to see the kids have more opportunities to do. And that's what this design came out as.
That was going to be one of my questions. So thank you. And Orchard Hill, when the new playground was, went in at Orchard Hill, we qualified for a grant. Can we qualify for, or do?
I tried. I actually put one in. But the problem is, this is not, if we were doing a giant, a large big structure, the full on structure that we did at Orchard Hill, we could have qualified potentially. But since we already have that large structure and we're adding the pieces all around it, they don't qualify.
So my only question is about, I think this is great. And you know, it's something that will serve kids in the community for a long, long time. So I think it's wonderful. My only question is just in terms of playground equity, if you will. How do we, how are we feeling about that after this project with where all of our elementaries will be with the, the equity of just, I don't know, the coolness, the, you know, the newness and accessibility and things like that are, are I think important.
Phoenix Elementary, the, so they actually have two. The one for the smaller kids is quite a bit older. But the, the other one, the, the main structure is actually, I think it was put in two years before I came. So it's probably only seven years old, seven or eight. Obviously, Orchard Hills is only a couple of years old. The Town Elementary is the piece that we have to remove. Game Time, the company that did this design, she came and looked at the structure and said, we don't have anything this old in operation. It's ninth. And she declared it unsafe.
So I think it's more of a safety thing.
It definitely is. It's definitely a safety. It's been a complaint, we've had complaints and it's been modified prior to my time. It had been modified for, because It had been modified for, because in nineteen seventy, they allowed things that we don't anymore.
Metal slides?
Yeah, stuff like that. It's been, and not always. Using approved playground equipment, plywood, a tap. Get their head through like that. Equity wise, they are the hate ball. And so this will catch them up.
Good, thank you.
I have a question. I know you have a maintenance schedule on like different buildings and you keep an eye on, you've done great since we hired you. Is the playground included into that where you check so often and okay?
Monthly, we do a, in our PM schedule, the playgrounds are inspected monthly. And frequently we turn up with, oh, we've got a few loose bolts. And so we have documented records on all of that to that. Of course, a few of my guys have taken classes on. Martha, Game Time's sales rep, I've had her come down and walk every one of our structures and see if she makes any recommendations for things that aren't allowed anymore. And so far we haven't ran into. She actually, I had her inspect the, the older, larger structure at TES. She found no deficiencies. So yes, monthly and then annually, we have a professional that's actually certified. Take a look at him.
Any other questions?
What's the timeline?
That's a tough one because we're not sure when it would come in. I would hope to get it done before the end of summer. That's why I pushed, I kind of pushed to get it added to the agenda next month so I could get the equipment ordered. But then there's also contractor shortages and playground installers are hard. Two that have given me quotes so far. So I'm hoping that we can get it in the, end of the summer. Worst case, we'd do it over winter break.
Is this something that we need to suspend the rules and make an action item tonight versus waiting two more weeks? In the timing or?
We don't have any financials in front of us to make that approval. I think, I think we, we might want to see the receipts before we do that. I don't know. Something in red, yeah.
He gave an overview and we have Esser funds, so. I mean-
A person could make a motion.
My question for John is would two additional weeks be help? If you're pushed to do this, is, would two additional weeks be helpful?
It definitely would.
So I'll move that we suspend the rules and move this from information discussion to action item. Well, I guess, hold on, prior to that, strike that. Brent, do you see a problem with? Financials as, as Michael brought up?
Yeah, the only problem that I might see and I might ask Denise, it's not labeled playground replacement on here as a facility update. So that's the only thing that I could see being an issue on here. Because this was not necessarily sent to the public, the, the playground design. Okay. That, that's the only way, but I don't know if that would prohibit, prohibited us from making that motion.
So just a little record keeping, since a motion was in play. It has to still be in play. There isn't a second, so it can die if no one seconds it, but it still is in play. All right.
I'll second it. I think we can, I think we can handle the, we can do a preliminary approval and you can handle whatever noticing you have to do. Because stuff, people can make a motion on stuff that's not on the agenda. So yeah, I'll second it, Sarah. How about that?
So just to be clear, I have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and move this to an action item. I will take it to a vote now. Nancy? Sarah?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
And I vote yes, it is now turned into an action item. So any discussion on or a motion?
So now, now we need a motion to approve funding of the playground.
I move that we approve the proposal of the playground presented in the facilities report for purchase or for bid?
For purchase, it's a state-
Purchase, okay, for purchase.
Second it.
Okay, so Sarah moved, Polly seconded it. Any discussion before I take it to a vote? I just wanted to point out that Michael had mentioned about the public, but it sounds like there was some public input and comment. And this is not like a surprise to a lot of people. So I will take it to a vote. Polly?
Yes.
Nancy? Sarah?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
I vote yes, you may purchase the equipment.
I wanted to thank you guys for your continued support and I will make this happen as quickly as possible.
Hey, you throw out the S word, safety and suspend rules.
I work the same way, Michael.
Okay, so I think this is a perfect time to take a quick break and excuse the student reps and the admin that would like to be excused. And I, we will take seven, eight minutes. Thanks. We are back in session. Thank you all for being patient. Sometimes it takes a minute. Moving on to financial update, do we have anything?
No, just reiterating, just the work that Jasmine's doing. And you know, we, Shawna mentioned it a little bit before. We, we are in a good position. I mean, as far as when we go through this budget season, but I just think keeping in mind the long road ahead, three, four, five, six years down the road, we need to be very cognizant about that and smart about how we're utilizing our funds. So we'll share more next week at the budget meeting.
Okay. And just reminder, the budget meeting is May 10th at seven?
Yeah, Tuesday at seven and library at the high school, I think.
Just wanted. It's good to have reminders. I forget, I can have it written down and forget. Next up is legislation, policy, OSBA and all of that stuff. Sarah, did you want to start off? Sarah, did you want to start off or do you want me? Sarah got to go to her first in-person LPC meeting and she did a great job.
I that was, I learned a lot at that meeting and really appreciated the conversation and also really appreciated the OSBA president and his willingness to talk about bringing a stronger, I guess, I'll just say that because I'll own that word, stronger voice for rural schools to the table for OSBA. And I know Craig had mentioned for years, we're, we're kind of the perfect size. We're right in there, but I really do feel like some because we're in that middle size, we can sometimes have challenges that fit also in with a rural and just strengthening the voice for our region and then also just learning how to represent our region, maybe when it's not what I personally agree or would have thought about, but learning how to represent the region, the region voice as well. So Dawn's a really great example in, in how to do that and really just continually boldly speaks to advocate for all students in our region. And I just really, I heard things differently than I'd heard them before and appreciated the representatives in the room. And that said, many knew to LPC, so I felt like I wasn't alone, but also many also knew on their school boards, like with a year or two, or maybe not even a year on their school board, serving on OSBA and LPC. So really looking ahead towards advocating and, and speaking for the region. So we have a meeting next, the week after, in two weeks to talk about how to communicate to our region. And I'm really looking forward to that because I felt like that was one component that I really wanted to hear about at this meeting and, and was really missed. So. Yeah.
Thank you, Sarah. That, yeah, that was one of the things we, the meeting ended and I was like, whoa, whoa, wait, you gave us all this, you know, prep work on how we're going to change and make the, and then you didn't like give us the very end. Like, you know, you gave us the ingredients, but not the recipe. And now what? I think it was a great meeting and I think it's going to be really important, especially what we just talked about with the admins and stuff, getting feedback. Cause there's going to be, there's a lot of policies and, and ODE regulations and that that don't make sense anymore. And so I think it's important to get that feedback. And at the end of the meeting, as Sarah said, I was outspoken, shocker. And, but at the end of the meeting, people were coming up to me and saying, I want to understand about your region. I want to understand why one of the examples was why people would not want board training, why people would not want, what was the other one that we talked about? And they also didn't really understand about the rural caucus. There were some concerns that it would be more, it was trying to be conservative. And I spoke out and said, look, I was in a meeting before COVID and before, you know, several years ago, it was two years on the board. So this was six years ago or so. And I was in a meeting about mental health and it was brought around the room, like what to do. And all these bigger communities were like, well, we just go to our whatever and there's mental health here and we get this help and we get this help. And I was like, it really wasn't helpful to me because all I'm hearing is your community isn't valued. And I feel like this is just going on and on year after year, sitting in rooms when we hear all the great things that community has. And I also mentioned like COVID, a lot of communities had way more help. In Portland, they had tents all over the place for assistance and it was more of a struggle here. And I know doctors offices and we talked about just community on that. One of the great things is that I was invited to be on this advisory. And so it was asked, what is a rural school? And this advisory committee gets to decide on what OSBA thinks of the rural school. It will probably not be what ODE says. And one of the first things that OD, that this committee might be doing is talking to ODE about their definition of a rural school may be a little outdated or, or may not be useful. So if you guys have any ideas of what a rural school would mean, one of mine is internet access. I know for where I live, I live eight, seven to eight minutes away from the high school and we do not, if you gave us a hotspot, it wouldn't be useful. Like there's no internet. So I think though, I think that would be one qualification of a rural school. If, if kids do not have access to internet, especially if the state wants to do, because you could give me a hotspot and it wouldn't, it wouldn't matter at all. So, and I know there's several people in that situation. So if you have any questions about that. The other thing is I've talked to Kristen Miles about training. I know sometimes being a school board member and you're a parent, it can be kind of like what line, I know it's kind of a challenge of what line. When do I put on my school board hat? And when, I mean, there are several times in times in meetings, I'll be like, okay, I've got my parent, I mean, I say out loud, this is my parent hat. And then pretty soon I'm like, okay, as a school board member, this is my school board hat. And I know that we're a really engaged board and we are friends or related to staff members. And so I don't know if a training on how to navigate these kind of gray area, difficult situations would be helpful to our board. But if it is, or even if it's just one or two people, Kristen said that she would be more than happy to do a virtual meeting or one-on-one conversations with any board members that feel like they could get, they could use some more support in these areas. So I wanted to put that out there. There is a group I've talked to about a lot that's school. It's called Community School Boards of Oregon. And Sarah and I have been going to the meetings. Michael was one time, but he, he's got his plate full. So Sarah and I have been going just mostly because that's our role as our representatives. They have filed a nonprofit status. It has not gone through yet and boards are starting to join. They are asking $2 per ADM. They will probably be, there was discussion at the last meeting on how at first they just wanted people and on the calls to go and, and support and like say, hey, we should join. But it was discussed that there needs to be some information, some things in writing their mission statement. So that's something you may want to see. They may be coming to our board and asking or giving us information. So if we see something from Southern or from Southern School Boards of Oregon with information that is in your email, that is what that's from. And if you want to be on one of those meetings or have any questions about that, you can ask me or Sarah, or you can contact Emily at Equal Point. And she will be more than happy to have a conversation with you. I think that is it. Sorry, that was kind of a lot. Oh, and there is going to be, did you mention that there is some time between the middle of May and the middle of June, there will be a Zoom meeting for our region, getting input on LP, on legislation. Lori's going to talk to us. This is what I understand here. If I'm wrong, please, please correct me. And then after we get that information, then we're going to have a Zoom meeting and then I'll, we'll give you the heads up. So. Any other discussion? Brent, do you have anything?
I was just going to mention, I'm really excited to do in-person OSBA summer conference. And for those that couldn't make that, I think it's good to, you know, just get away and connect and, and see what those sessions are. Those learning opportunities there. So I'm glad that's happening again.
And I think that the main concept is going to be engagement with your community and making sure all voices are heard. So I think that's important. And then I know that there's some other great information. Pace is going to have a workshop that Dave and I have been talking about. So I look forward to that. Okay. Moving on to Omega Fire update.
I'll do this. I was unable to attend the meeting because of a work conflict. I asked for the minutes to be set over, so I'm waiting for those and I'll share them out when I get them.
Thanks, Polly. Tiffany Lambert and I attended a luncheon essentially that Pam Marsha put together with a number of providers and those who served fire survivors. And there was a lot of agencies represented in, it was, it was really great just to get together in one room and just hear about the amazing work of so many, the last 19 months. And then the next topic of discussion was what's, what do we do the next 19 months? Because those will be critical for, you know, our families and our kids. And it was a great just time to get together and reflect, but also collaborate and, and connect and know that there are so many working so hard to provide for our students and family. So it was really energizing and it, it was, I'm, I'm hopeful. I left very hopeful for the next 19 months. Still a lot of work, still a lot of coordination, still a lot of systems to kind of put in place. One thing that I was really encouraged by Pam Marsh has been on the forefront of the manufactured homes. You might've seen them on the highway 99 that they're being stored. There should be some more information in the next month on how families can apply and access that opportunity.
Pam Marsh mentioned on one of our town halls that on May 20th, there was an ice cream social at the high school on May 20th. Is there, do we have any other information about that?
We will get some. I thought that was in the summer, but I will find out more.
Maybe I have the date wrong. I thought she said May 20th. So. Oh, I have that as a Friday. So I hadn't seen May 20th. May 22nd. Are we waiting?
Okay, we'll get confirmation on that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Great question, Sarah. Okay. Anything else on the Omega Fire? Okay. Moving on to, let me make sure I get this right. Diversity, equity and inclusion? Equity, okay. It was on here, corrector, on here correctly. Equity, diversity and inclusion. I apologize.
Go ahead.
Is there a right or wrong way to say that? I think it's just the order of the words. I mean, some people put an emphasis on the order, but I don't think we've done that. So I don't think you said it wrong.
Okay, thank you.
Holly, would you like to share anything?
Oh, she's, she's so funny. We've been chatting back and forth. Who's going to share? We were meeting this week. I'm going to share a few things. I'll let you speak Nancy to the training that's coming up because you're going to be involved in that in July, right? But they talked some about, which I was really excited to hear about because it's always been a passion of mine and having some kids in the district in this category, I mean, I shouldn't say it that way, but feeling that we needed to step up in this category in the talented gifted services that are offered to students. There's a real emphasis, Heather shared some really good information on what's happening with that and how to the extracurricular activities like electricity workshop and robotics that they're being offered in the schools, which are creating a new place for kids to explore things that they really feel passionate about. I always hear about the family engagement teams and I want to, you know, sing their praises of how wonderful those programs are and what they do to promote diversity. And listening to the voices of our families and, and also getting information in SI category. Also talking about wellness and different ways that we can be inclusive of all those students. Also, they spoke about, which I thought was really a thing, a great thing was Talon Elementary School took a lot of kids to a pool to go visit and there was some kids from all different classrooms that were invited to that. Some did not even get in the pool, but they enjoyed the bus ride and having the field trip and being in that situation, which was really fun to hear about. Also talking about how to incorporate these policies that have been drafted by the committee. They have a lot of work ahead. I'm just glad that we're having these discussions and moving forward within those circles and in the schools to see how we can best promote these practices throughout the district. We talked about summer school offerings. Tiffany made a great presentation about migrant worker programs and how they are going to more equitably promote those summer school activities this year. And also the CTE credits and including them in the summer school programs. That's my report from that meeting.
See, you got it all in before you had to cough. Yay. Carmen and the rest of this wonderful team has really been working on the blueprint. And maybe, did you mention that? Might've been distracted. But Carmen and the rest of the, this group is really working on a blueprint for inclusion and they have a really great start. It's pretty comprehensive. It's easy to understand. I love that they will be presenting that to the ad team soon, once it's finalized, but it feels like a really strong start. Also the coaching for educational equity, that is going to happen in July, July 9th through 16th. Oh my goodness. July 9th through 16th. I think that there's one spot available. So if somebody would, somebody else would like to participate, let Tiffany know right away. Or Carrie, or somebody from the school. I'm not really sure who the right, okay. Tiffany, any questions? Just go to Tiffany and she will direct you in the right place. Let me see what other, something else that you might have, that I might have. Oh, we did talk about providing or having a discussion around language interpretation or accessibility for any sort of promotion, either like at the elementary school, so from elementary to middle school, middle school to high school, and then at high school graduation. Just ensuring that there has been some consideration or accessibility for those, for those really big, exciting upcoming events that are happening and they happen so fast. What else did I miss, Tiffany?
I just want to commend Carmen and Carrie, who have been our co-facilitators this year. They've just, they've done such an amazing job and, you know, we had some goals for inclusion awareness and that blueprint for inclusion is a tremendous start and a great document. And that, that will be, you know, something that really can guide our, our work with inclusion. So really want to commend them. Also just kind of following up on some of the other work that we've had DL Richardson come in next Wednesday. DL is going to be at the middle school at 8:00 AM with staff and he is zooming in. Assistant Superintendent of Equity, Diversity and Inclusion from ODE, Deb Lang. So he's asked the staff to get some questions prepared. So, and, and then her assistant. he's asked the staff to get some questions prepared so and and then her assistant as well is going to be there. So it's just a wonderful opportunity to have access that are to those that are really making decisions and providing a framework for this work at the state level. So really appreciate Kent and DL especially to have those connections to do so next Wednesday at 8:00 AM. If you can be there at Talon Middle School, wanted to offer that up. Yes, I will. We will all forward emails from Kent that he says to the staff to you guys.
Back before COVID, I keep on saying that I went, ODE had a I don't know what it was Tiffany, it was Special Ed Inclusion conference. It was amazing and they were, it seemed like they were moving forward on on a whole bunch of great steps forward, but then it kind of just died down. Is this part of now getting back in the basis or is it, am I just being hopeful? Well, yeah, I would like all students, but yes. Right. Sorry.
So the ODE is starting to give more trainings. Brent mentioned the training we went to yesterday. It was the first ODE training that we had in person for two and a half years. So they're starting to get back so we can have that technical assistance to better have more inclusive practices. Yeah, they're also starting back up the attendance, which was now called Everyday Matters, which when we participated in that attendance program pre-COVID, it was really about family engagement and getting kids to school. You know, creating that sense of belonging. So we're pretty excited about that to to have that training again too.
Yeah, because they came out and they were like, we want more kids in general ed and they were, they were really strong messages that I know some, some people were a little bit surprised by and then it just kind of went down and I was like, I was so excited on the movement they had moved and it just kind of felt like it disappeared. So I'm glad to hear that it's coming back. Anything else? Okay. Moving on to bless you, Language Arts Curriculum. Oh, guess what? Perfect timing.
I brought props as well. So next board meeting, you'll be voting to whether to adopt our curriculum that we presented for middle school English Language Proficiencies, so our English Language Development classes. Here's just a sample. They are all set up in the boardroom. A public viewing starts on Monday. It will be for until the next board meeting. And every day of the week except for Tuesdays because we have ad team in that meeting or in that room from 8 to 4:30 and Joe's going to put a reminder to the public on Facebook and on our website. So the public know they can stop in, but it's set up there. So you can stop in tomorrow. So for newcomers from middle school and high school, our ELD teachers, there are two of them and then our ELD coordinator Maria Lee and myself researched, you know, a handful of curriculum materials. Lori, who is our middle school ELD teacher, brought them into her class and did a lesson just a pilot and they really enjoyed these materials. So for newcomers, National Geographic Time Zone and there are different levels. It's based on language proficiency levels and impact for levels two and three for both middle school and high school. ELD and then high school has chosen, they believe StudySync is the best option for our ninth through 12th grade language arts. Last time I was here, I talked about all of our criteria and non-negotiables. This was the only one that met the the non-negotiables. We are proposing to focus on the digital version for like the textbook book part and then find more paper copies of the novels and such. But I did order samples of the hardback material. So the public can view it. You can do it as well. And then for the first time, this is a really exciting part. Our teachers are really excited. Our secondary language arts curriculum adoption for secondary is all the secondary language arts teachers. They've done a lot of work on their own, bringing the lessons into their classrooms, getting student feedback. They've gone through things with a fine tooth comb. Lots of detail has gone into it, but we've never actually had an AP curriculum. And this is what they stress AP Literature, AP Composition. The books, this one is one they brought in for composition and they showed it to other 12th graders as well. And a lot of the 12th graders had said like they wanted to purchase a copy for college that they thought it's a lot of good work for writing. So we love when kids are excited about writing. And our AP teachers are amazing. They've been creating that curriculum to follow the whole time. So they're pretty excited to actually have a core. So that will be a first for us. Next meeting will also present, we're still working on middle school and elementary. Middle school has it down to two, either looking at StudySync or looking at Amplify, but they're in the middle of elementary and high school. So they need to wait to see what elementary adopts before they make their final decision. So they've been working really, really hard. We have a meeting with elementary again tomorrow. We have for elementary, every grade level, every school. Two-way immersion, special education, English Language Development administrators, everybody's represented in that to get a well-rounded book at the curriculum. And so that will be presented at the next board meeting. Link, maybe you'll consider suspending the rules because we really need to order quickly so that we can pay within this fiscal year, which would be by June 30.
Will there be opportunity to review that material before we vote on it?
The materials for elementary is in the boardroom as well.
It is in there too.
They just haven't made that that decision.
Got it. Okay, great.
And elementary is really complicated too, because we have three different schools. I can't just have everybody, you know, all the language arts teachers there because they all teach reading and writing. But it's also that Spanish component. Since we have a two-way immersion program, we need every we need a good translation of Spanish, the exact same curriculum, because they do a simultaneous by literacy model. It's super tricky for language arts. So it's just taking us a little more time to make sure that we have that material and that our two-way immersion teachers, some of the kits that you'll see are missing components because we needed our teachers to go and try them, especially in that two-way immersion class. So some of the Spanish materials might be more limited. But everything has an online version. Starting Monday, I'll have all the codes so you can review it online as well.
That's great. Thank you.
All the way. Sorry. We have public access for the online versions as well.
We did that. We did that for I think science and that was really helpful for me to like play with it online.
Yeah, some people like the paper copies to come in. So that's there, but some people just want to access it from home and that's that's there as well. For elementary through middle, we're really focused. It'll be a virtual, you know, component, but really the importance of having books in our hands. So we'll be, you'll see there's a lot of paper. We'll be purchasing a lot of paper for those levels.
Any other questions for Tiffany? Like Polly has any questions? Okay, moving. Thank you Tiffany very much. Moving on to the board calendar, board meeting calendar. So I've had a couple of people say we need more work sessions or study sessions. And so I thought about the months that this is just a suggestion. It's in the blue, the months that we only have one meeting to just pencil in an additional meeting. So that could be a study session. I know before I had this long, when we had our study session, I had a long list of things and we didn't have enough time to to go through that and if and whoever the board chair is next year, that might be helpful for them. If it's me, that's great, but it might be helpful for them to to or the board to have some kind of like if we need it, we can, if we want to use it for some for something else. It was just a suggestion of maybe having something kind of put in there that we could. Sometimes we spend a lot of time with discussions on in our board meetings. It might be better to have it on a work session. So that was just a suggestion. But I'm going to open up for comments of what everybody thinks about the calendar.
So, yeah, I thought the like the board retreat we had last summer was really, really great and I'd love to see that added to the calendar. Because I think there's always room for that type of in, you know, enriching discussion on especially as we're just continuing to navigate all the challenges coming our way post-COVID rebuild and everything and then, you know, budgetary stuff too. So the July 6 meeting on a Wednesday, is that because we have summer board that weekend?
Yeah, and Denise is going to participate in the early session. And so that's why we put it on Wednesday.
Okay, got it.
And I will be participating in one of the early sessions. So do you have a suggestion? I mean, this is just a rough draft. We're going to vote on it next, but do you have a suggestion or what do you suggest on putting a retreat on the calendar?
I think it's a good idea. I mean, I, I think it's a little easier to put the dates on now, have us block them out versus trying to coordinate the calendar. So I'd advocate for adding those in and if potentially it's not a work session, it could potentially be community engagement. I mean, I think there's a lot of opportunities for us to to utilize that second meeting. So it looks like it's only really an additional two meetings throughout the two, throughout the year. So.
I was just gonna, I actually put this year's, you'll notice that we just had one January meeting. I actually put two January meetings on here. So just because of one meeting, I think we felt that one meeting in December and one meeting in January. So there is an extra meeting there that you could do as a study session as well or keep it as as we have it here within official board meeting. So that's just another minor change that we did.
Any other discussion?
So how close is, how close is the 16th to the spring break?
Oh, that was.
Is it?
Thank you, Sarah. I was going to talk about that and maybe Denise's. So on that one, actually, spring break is kind of late. And so the sixth, the April 6 meeting was the meeting that would be challenging. And Denise said usually we do, I meet with Brent and Denise puts the packet together, but she would be, it would be spring break when that would happen. So I, we talked and I wanted to bring it to the board is if we did the packet two weeks ahead and then maybe had two blue folders, a blue folder on Tuesday when she, because a lot of things can happen during spring break and then a blue folder on additional, if there's any additional times because Denise was concerned. She's like, sometimes I don't have the information until the week before. And so we, or the day, well, the day of, but sometimes the week before, you know, if you're doing it two weeks early. So but then changing, we looked at changing the dates and it would just be kind of. Yeah. So that one, the April 6 meeting, we might get our packets early and it would be kind of light and then we might have to have some additional things trickle in depending on what's on that agenda unless we move it.
No, I, I think that's, I think that's a great solution. I'm trying to remember when we're done with our policy update as far as looking at that calendar too. Okay. I think I have it on my calendar. I just I just didn't know if adding additional. I just didn't know if adding additional meetings could be helpful for breaking that up or just keeping to what it is for adding any, but I don't, it doesn't look like we'd be adding necessarily any dates. I guess August would be the only one if we needed to do a catch up on our policy, on the policy rewrite. Okay.
I guess my other question is how important on these study sessions for everyone to be there because the I am going to be gone usually in August. I know this was my idea to add times, but usually in August, we only have one meeting. And so I'm going to be gone for like majority of August, like three weeks of August. But I don't know if it's important for the whole board to be at a study session or not. So I just wanted to.
I think we want to be accommodating and make sure people can be there. So I also think you know, the retreat doesn't have to happen in the summer, but you know, I would defer to Brent possibly on every month is busy, but what would be a good month to possibly do that? I just think, you know, coming out of organizational meeting, I think it's a good time to do it. It's kind of as we're just organizing ourselves for the year.
In July?
Maybe.
I was thinking that too. I was thinking, well, I don't know what everybody's vacation time is. I don't want to ruin that at all. But it does make sense after organization and the summer board conference to have a retreat afterwards because we would be usually the summer, yeah, it makes you fresh and like you get ideas and so I like that, but I don't know for staff wise if that's going to I don't want to ruin anyone's vacation.
I think that's, I think that's, well, speaking for myself, not Denise. I don't want to speak for Denise, but I think, well, that's true. Yeah. I think, I think that would be a good idea. And I think I think we're really going to see a difference when we have summer board conference and November annual conference. And if when we get those consistent, I think we're going to see some you know, we're going to have some opportunities to do that. But I also think the organizational meeting right after that will have that summer board conference and then, you know, late July or to do a retreat. I think that's, I think that's great.
Like Saturday, the 23rd of July. Well, last time I think we did what four hours on a weekend and it was pretty rushed. So.
It was, but if we were coming off of the board conference and if we're going to try to do them a little bit more often, we may have not potentially as much to try to you know, maximize the the evening availability, trying to help staff a little bit and not take a weekend. So I, I think moving it to July, sounds like August might be challenging. And I agree that you know, best participation is, you know, but life happens. So I'd advocate for end of July and maybe a, maybe the like the 21st or the like the 21st, which is a couple of weeks after the board retreat and gives us a little bit of time before our board meeting.
I agree. Weekends are nice, but they're busy when you have kids and families and this and that. So I think I know it doesn't give you a lot of time, but I think, I think that we're, I think this is a good step forward.
How does staff feel about an eat, a later evening versus a weekend?
Really like it.
So we can, I can get together with Denise and we can kind of put some ideas and then we can tweak them at the next meeting. So thank you very much for all that input. I appreciate it and I think so to staff and next is the district review of district transfer slots.
Yeah, you have a document in your folders that is shares a little bit about where we are this year.
Shares a little bit about where we are this year, and then there's a proposal for next year, and as you. Look at the transfer outs, last year we, for the first time, we just allowed hardships out and not necessarily. Um, opening up slots, uh, that puts our staff in a little bit of a, a challenge when. You know, all of a sudden a family gets that last slot transfer out, and then another family may want to do the same thing, but there. It needs to be hardship, so the hardship I would recommend still for the transfer out. The transfer in, you may notice that we already have eight requests for kindergarteners transferring in. And we only, in this document, have ten slots open, so. My suggestion would be, I think, to modify this transfer in slot and double the K-five. Numbers there. Just because we do have the room, we do have ADM security, we're not losing teachers. Whether we get that many students or not, we'll see, but, um, typically we get them in kindergarten and first grade. And I'll entertain any questions or, or thoughts, but if, if that's something that the board would be interested in, we can make the next. When we move that for approval, next time, we can make that change.
When, I mean, do we need to make an adjustment to accommodate families now, or does that, can that not happen?
Like tonight?
Not tonight, or like the next meeting, or is that not, that's something you have to do during the window that you do that, right?
Yeah, yeah, and, and that'll be, that'll be fine. You also, sometimes we get questions on eleventh and twelfth, twelfth graders. Why we don't allow in slots, we used to do that, but then when we started tracking data. It, it wasn't, we didn't have successful graduates when we did that, so, um, it's, uh. Most often, um, you know, better for them to stay where the high school, they know, know that they've been at for so many years, so. Um, that question comes up quite a bit too.
We still allow hardship transfers in.
Oh, yeah, hardships are still.
Hardships are still hardships, this is just the, so you're, just to clarify my understanding. You're suggesting or recommending that we up the proposed. Request for transfer in slots for kindergarten to twenty and first grade to ten? To do that, to double those numbers?
Yes.
Okay.
That'll be, when does that happen? When do we make that decision?
Well, that will be approval for, at next meeting.
Oh, at the next meeting?
Yeah, okay, yeah.
All right, that's what I was, okay.
So if you get that's something that the board wa- wishes to modify, I can have that reflect, this reflect the official document for action.
I would say we would defer to your judgment on that, yeah.
I mean, that's, we will do that, it, it's, um. I do, I will say that we are, we're in the best interest of families and, um. You know, we, we hardships are pretty clear on criteria. You know, I'd, I'd ask for that you have some leniency, if we have some transfers out that are extraordinary in circumstances that do not meet the hard. Meet the hardship criteria, that, um, you allow me that opportunity to really look at that with the, uh. Close lens and, and reflect on that, so that's something that Denise and I have talked about a lot. Um, and would appreciate that flexibility.
Sounds good. Question, um. From what I understand in the past, and I could be wrong, that transferring in and out. Um, usually happen at beginning of, so it would be kindergarten first, it would be, uh, sixth, and it would be ninth, correct? Um, do we want, um, to open up slots? I, uh, for the sixth grade and for the ninth grade, I'm an, I'm an imagining, I don't know, um. It seems like. Just wondering if we wanted to, if that would be beneficial to us or not, especially with those, uh. Seems like there's a little bit more flexibility, especially in ninth grade with the schedules and, and students versus. Like a kindergarten class, there's only so many teachers, but, um, a high school would have a little tiny bit more flexibility. Would that be beneficial or no?
You, you are correct, typically we get those at the beginning of those and, and so. If we were to do that, just to clarify, then that would move kindergarten to twenty, first to ten, sixth. To ten and nine to ten. I, I think that, I think that makes sense, so.
I was just wondering if, if those seem to be typically, um. Well, it looks like on this, um, on this sheet it is, but.
Uh, on the ninth, yeah, the, uh, transfers in for the sixth, we didn't have, uh, as many, but. I would love to have more flexibility to transfer in at those grades, because that's, that's when people are. That's when they're most successful, when they're coming into a new school with other new kids, so. So I can make that change as well for six.
Can I also maybe recommend, it looks like at seventh already two of the three slots, and since some neighboring districts. Do elementary school through sixth grade, there's a potential to get them at seventh instead of. Like our district does at middle school, so potentially maybe opening up another slot or two at seventh grade it as well. Might be beneficial for us. If we're bumping numbers, let's, let's bring them in, this is the best district, so.
Absolutely.
Give them the opportunity to come here.
So, and that's a good point. Because sixty-six percent of those slots are already taken, uh, once we get this approval from the board. So we can definitely move that to five or, or ten or whatever you'd like to put on that.
So how to, yeah, we need to do a lesson on how all this works, because. In terms of like the number you open up for incoming transfers, you have to have an equal number of outgoing or?
No, it's completely up to the board.
Oh, wow.
On how they establish these numbers, for example. Medford this year, it are, they're approving every out transfer, not, not hardship, not anything, they just. Any transfer that got wants to go, um, out of the district. Typically it was around the region, it was all hardships out, that's why we moved to that last year. Um, Medford's the only one I think that has done that so far, um, the other boards are making that decision now. We asked why they did that and, um, you know, just mobility, they were spending. Hours and hours of staff time to, um, really look at those hardships and things of that nature. We don't have as many, um. You know, if we simplify it for hardship, so those, those get processed, they come to me, we can, we can manage that. Um, the in slots are really, it's just what number we want to put on them.
I mean, I would just think we would want an appropriate number to meet the demand. And so however way we can do that. What I don't want to have happen is we have kids who want to come here, we have space for them. But we have an arbitrary number that we decided on in a meeting, preventing that from happening, so. Any way we can be, you know, accommodating, I think is important.
Well, if we fill up these spots, we could approach the board and say, hey, would you, would we like to open more spot? Some of it is protection of FTE and staffing. Also, elementary is a little more flexible, because if, um, you know, they may want to. Come into Orchard Hill and Orchard Hill's third grade, this happened, third grade maybe at twenty-eight kids, but it. Phoenix or talent, it might be nineteen or twenty, so, um. And we do have a spot for third grade, but may not be their elementary school that they choose, so. But we could certainly do that if we have a, um, if we have slots that are filled and we have demand. Certainly would love to come back to the board and say, will you consider this number at this grade level?
Yes, please.
So that's good to know that this isn't locking us into a specific number for a, a certain period of time then.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it does, and we, we, the board establishes their ins and outs, and then. I mean, the board can make the decision to, to modify that as well, so.
Let them come.
So I hear a K at twenty-one, at ten, six at ten. Seven at. Oh, no, just modifying the, the different ones. Um, seventh, what did we say?
We just said more.
Do I hear a ten?
Yeah.
Ten. Seven at ten and then nine at ten, ninth at ten. And then we can do that, and we can modify these at next meeting too, but we'll just, we'll make this discussion reflect what those numbers are. Um, for next time.
Thank you. I don't know, like, if any background information will help, back five years ago, probably when you were on Medford, there was open enrollment. And that, that went away, and the rumor is that there, there might be something similar coming again, so. You know, gotta be flexible sort of, but we'll see. I think if we're flexible, that might make. Yeah, open enrollment, not come back, I don't know.
We have room.
Yeah, oh.
We have room and, yeah, we, and we provide an amazing education, so. Bring them on.
And you will notice, we were backwards on this. Sheet for many, many years, even pre-pandemic, pre-fire, we started to get back to even. I think one year we were plus one, which was a huge celebration on transfers in over transfers out. Um, and that was a lot of work by, you know, staff and selling our programs and things of that nature, so. Um, and a commitment to the board to say, no, we, we offer a great education, we want, want to open up out slots, open enrollment, we had no choice, so.
Okay, perfect. Um, moving on to the board policy rewrite sections, G part A.
So my only overarching question about these sections is there are a lot of things that staff has recommended to delete. Um, and I just want to make sure we vetted. The legality of deleting some of these policies, I'm sure you have, but I just have to ask a question.
Yes, absolutely, and one, I think, one that, um, I would like to discuss is. Um, one of them on here, I can't remember exactly what it is, but the pre-employment drug screening. Um, it is deleted, but it's mentioned in other, uh, policies about, um, having pre-employment drug screening for. Um, I think the word is offer and safety. Um, operating machinery, and I can't exactly remember what the language is, but tha- that will be a change. Many districts have already changed that. A few years ago, when we ask OSBA about what percentage, they, they didn't really give us a percentage, but it's, it's about half and half. It just, you ask a district if they do pre-screening, pre-employment drug screening, it's about half and half, so. But yes, as far as the legalities, all these recommendations meet those legalities.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
I only have one, which is, um, G B D A. And that is for, um, a place for, um, expression of milk or breastfeeding, that the new facility building. Wasn't, uh, it had the old, it had a space at the old facility, the old building on Culver. It should probably be updated to the new facilities, workspace. At the high school. By the high school.
Thank you.
We did reflect the one on the new building now, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Anything else?
I, I think I say this every time we do this, this is a huge undertaking for the board and long overdue. And just thank you for your time on this, Denise, thank you for your time on this. Uh, it is, um, we actually finally have a process that I think is a good, working a little easier, but. Um, it's, it's big and it's, it's so important right now, so thank you.
I just want to reiterate how helpful that it's been to read through these and actually try to have some sort of understanding of. What as a board were policy enacting, instead of having it come randomly as popcorn, you know, the same one. Six times in a three-year period and then unseen, didn't know it even existed, so. Um, I just also appreciate that, and I just want to thank the staff for the time, um, to make the suggestions. In addition to looking at, um, what OSBA has done, you know, providing that service, but then also looking at what it really means for our district as well, so. Kudos to the staff for helping us navigate through this process.
Anything else before I move on? Okay, hearing then, we are going to review the next meeting agenda. I was going to mention something at this meeting, but did not, so I am going to ask for it to be put on next agenda, which is. Talk, some districts, uh, don't do a lot of their minutes, because. Now minutes are virtual and someone can go on and watch the. The live recording, and so that would like be a discussion on how, what do we need to do on the minutes and if, if, um. Live recording would be sufficient, I know Denise has looked into it a little bit, and so I would like to have a little discussion about that, um. So, I know we still need to have minutes, but I think if we change things around, um, and made it easier, I would just like to have that discussion. To make sure we're not duplicating our, ourselves and, um, we're doing what's best for everybody, so. I like to put that on the agenda if that's okay with everybody, and then, um, the board calendar, we don't need to do the playground. Um, curriculum and, uh, the, some grants and special revenue. And anything else we need to add to the draft, the agenda, if you think of it later. Brent and I will meet, be meeting in a week and you can email or text us.
Thank you.
Okay, that being said, thank you everybody for hanging out, sorry this went so long, have a nice evening.